So, uh, yeah, we, we don't really have a busy work session, but it's a busy work session. I'd like to call to order the work session at 5:00 PM, uh, on November fourteenth. And, um, we have two executive session items. Uh, PCDC is sandwiched in between, so I'm gonna take the, the meat out of the sandwich here. And we're gonna open with executive session number one. Discussion in accordance with the Texas Government Code, Section 551 dot zero seven two, deliberation regarding real property and section five five one zero seven one, consultation with attorney related to downtown east development. And then item number two C, executive session consultation with legal counsel pursuant to section five five one dot zero seven, zero seven one of Texas government code for discussion regarding litigation, settlement and arbitration fees for Austin Materials LLC versus City of Plugerville. Are all our attorneys for two C here? Well, you guys may be on after all.
Actually, we put it on two C because it, that attorney has to come from San Marcos, so he's gonna be here later. That's why he's later on the agenda. Two A is the one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, let's go back.
We have, we need one more. So we're back from executive session, no action was taken. So let's move on to item number two B, joint meeting with the PCDC board and city council to discuss the Fleuryville Community Development Corporation Conference of Economic Development strategic plan. You may open your board, Mr. President.
So open.
Okay. All right. Mr. Delisi. Or whoever's opening.
I think we got it.
I think that's me.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council, President Dennis Spencer, members of the PCDC board. It's really an exciting time to be here this evening to talk to you a little bit about where we are with our strategic plan. This is our second visit on the plan. And just to give you some backdrop drop, this morning we met at eight thirty for a couple hours with our steering committee. That conversation was very invigorating and it was just really exciting to hear some of the things that came out of that conversation. We also talked about what we're going to visit about this evening. One of the things we did talk about was the economic development profession. We touched on that and how that has changed and how we are called in that profession to do so many different things. And, and the challenges that we're facing now and in the future. It's a changing and adaptable, I mean, it's, it's a changing canvas. And with that, it brings challenge for us to, to really meet the needs and provide the services and effort that is needed by any community. But I think more recently, there were a hundred economic development professionals who were asked to describe their profession in one word. And the word cloud results that are in front of you tonight were quite revealing. You know, we all encounter any universal pressures and topics like public safety, healthcare, childcare, housing, transit, workforce, climate change, and-
Somebody actually used the word cloud in word cloud?
Yeah, word, and, and it is cloudy, isn't it?
Okay, cloudy, okay.
Yeah, yeah. So there are rising costs as well and are impacting economic growth. And so what we did just today was at noon, we met with the chamber and we asked the business owners and the folks that attended, if they could describe in one word what was happening to them, what would that one word be? So we did use the word cloud, word cloud for the profession. But then we looked at what our businesses locally are also experiencing today. If you look in the papers that you have in front of you, you're going to see one that looks like this. And it looks very different in some ways, but very similar in others. And what we found in that discussion today, that we're really all experiencing a lot of the same universal concerns and needs. And working together as a community, we can begin to solve some of those problems and challenges that we're having. So tonight, what we wanted to do was to discuss the strategic plan of where we are today. And I'm going to turn it over to Tony to take it from there, Tony Delisi with Ernst &amp; Yen.
Thank you, Amy, and it's a pleasure to see all of you again and to be here as well with the PCDC board. Yeah, it is interesting, I mean, we're seeing this all around the country and it's, it's no different anywhere. The, the conditions are different, but there's so many competing priorities, so many topics and different concerns that people have in every community across this whole country. But, you know, as we always say, if, if everything's a priority, then nothing's a priority. And so part of the process of building a strategic plan here is listening to folks and understanding where we really want to focus and have that strategy to allow us to cut through some of this noise and focus on the key activities that are going to move a community forward. And it's been nice going through this process. We've got kind of about halfway through the strategic planning process here. If you look at, where are we in here? It's November now, so it's, it's been really a pleasure to, with our team, to be having conversations directly with council members, with the board, with businesses and residents and others throughout the community. And really informing here, I think, where we're starting to hone in on the areas of focus here for the plan. So I'm going to skip a bit of what we prepared. I'll, I'll run through this quickly. The, the setting the stage, I think, is, is less important than honing in on the limited time we have here in an hour to really think about what the future of economic development activity should be focusing on here in Fleuryville. But, you know, the quick macro contest here is again accelerated change. There's, there's a lot of things happening, disruption to economic systems, COVID-19, work from home. You know, we talked a lot about office vacancy this morning and working from home, the trends that those are affecting. Artificial intelligence and the amount of change, that's going to look into things. We, we've seen a study from bookings, 25% of all workers in the U.S. We've we've seen a study from bookings, twenty-five percent of all workers in the US right now are exposed to potential disruption of their jobs through automation. So we're also seeing other trends, twenty-five percent of folks on that work from home area. So we've got jobs that are under threat, jobs that are not located where they used to be. All of this is changing the dynamics of how we even think about what economic development is and where we need to focus. The affordability side is so critical and I know top of mind here in Flugerville and across the entire region. It's not just housing, but rising childcare costs, challenges with mobility and transportation of connecting people to these jobs. We're really thinking about how these all interact, but it's not all negative in this macro context. We've got this amazing moment that we're in right now of new national industrial policy. We're doing some work with some folks over in the UK and they just marvel at it because they don't have the tools that the US has, both on a fiscal side and on an industrial investment side and the other sides. They don't have the space for these kinds of things to see this investment. When we say industrial, we're talking about the new technologies, electric vehicles, semiconductors, advancing all the things that are going to continue to make us competitive to allow us to deliver better services to our citizens and all these things. It's it's really a crazy time, as you saw on the last slide, as many folks said, but really exciting moment here. And I think skipping ahead a bit to, you know, a lot of this drives this conversation. So, you know, if work from home is here to say, and this this isn't new, this was true pre-work from home trending in a big way post pandemic. But we're now recruiting people as much as companies. We're thinking about where people want to be and where people want to thrive because the companies are following. Or in many cases, the companies are located in the cloud. They're they're located in different places with their people being where they choose to be. And so we're really thinking about communities as those places that can retain, nurture, support and grow the people and the companies alongside them. And this this little context, I know that it's skin this, but factoring in, this is very much a regional context for all of these conversations. We're seeing growth in Austin, in the greater Austin region, slow a little bit. It's still, it's, we say moderating growth for the region. But this is factoring in when you think about the affordability challenges that we're seeing here. Um, can we sustain, you know, the the rapid growth? We've dropped from three point three percent on average in the region to two point six. This is still significantly above anywhere else in the region and continuing to affect that affordability challenge. Uh, we hear this a lot in our conversations in Flugerville, but there's nowhere in this region that has been immune to these affordability challenges. And likely the solutions are not ones that we can solve alone in one community. These are regional in nature. And again, thinking about those jobs that are at risk for automation, same for that jobs when we're thinking about opportunity. Eighty-six percent of net new jobs in the next five years that pay a living wage, just a living wage alone, will require some form of post-secondary credentialing. That education imperative, whether it's a a certificate, an associate degree, bachelor's, master's, you name it. The the future of people having a a positive career track requires something beyond high school. And really another note to the thing is that the whole region is focusing on increasingly prioritizing how we emerge and interact with the global economy. And focusing us particularly on a lot of industries that really make sense and have continued to see uh growth here in Flugerville. But really want to hone in here and get your opinions, and this is why we're having this conversation on the priorities and the areas that we're seeing emerge from the conversations that we've been having from folks across the community. So this is a combination. We've been doing interviews, there's also been a survey, but through our interviews and our conversations, looking at the data, we've really heard loud and clear from a number of different stakeholders, including folks here in this room, the desire to create a bold, future-oriented vision and unique identity for Flugerville. Not just talking about business growth overall, but what is that future identity? What does this community want to be as you continue to grow and continue to evolve? You're in a very different position than you were ten years ago, so taking all of that into account, how do we be selective and clear on putting a stake in the ground to identify that vision, to develop it? Thinking too, through that that place that you have here within that SH one thirty, if we think of it developing a technology corridor, how can Flugerville be that innovation hub here? There's been conversations on exploring the feasibility of an innovation district to anchor that, building it on your industry strengths, focusing on higher education, entrepreneurial support and helping create that um that identity that will help attract the types of investment, the types of things that folks want to see. Particularly that is implementing a balanced strategy that focuses on those primary employers, those great opportunities but and the community amenities that go along with it, the restaurants, the entertainment, the trails, the things that make this a high-quality place to live, that attract people here, but also keep them here and deliver on that brand, that promise, that identity for the community. And through that, as part of that process of identifying those opportunities for targeted investment in mixed-use town center development that build that character, that build that identity that folks want to see. I'm going to pause here. As you're looking at this, how how do you react? Are there surprises here?
I don't think there's any surprises. I think that, well, for me, the the AI information um just simply lets us know that jobs and people are being replaced. Um, so yeah, just interesting information. Thank you.
Is there anything missing?
Tell me more about the innovation district, I guess.
I like that. You're thinking ahead a little bit. We're we're going to get into this some more. Um, but I think, you know, there's been some conversation about, you know, for years, the type of office development you'd like to see here, the types of companies you'd like like to be attracting, and we haven't seen that necessarily accelerated as quickly as we could. Historically, the last, you know, pre-pandemic, the decade leading up to that, we were seeing office development mostly happening in central business districts in larger regions. They wanted to be in dense environments, near amenities, near those other office users. And that's where most of the construction across the country was occurring in urban areas and urban regions, I'll say. Um, but part of attracting that type of investment, we're showing people that that opportunity is here. Like, we know it, you live here, we've we've identified it, the 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 smart folks are here, we see the opportunity. But if others aren't seeing it, how do we focus on building something that's going to put that flag in the sand and say, look at us, this is what we want to be, and I'll show some examples of what that could look like. But if they're focusing on an innovation district that has flexible office space, other users, there's examples of where we really build this out around particular industries that are already strong in, bringing in the higher education components, the entrepreneurial components all together in one place, and starting to see that activity churn and that visible look of what future development building from that could look like so that others can see it and see opportunities to invest and grow.
So are we thinking about that uh geographically? Are we thinking, well, we've we've already got Impact Way and we're going to build an innovation district from Impact Way South? Or are we thinking about greenfields or what what's the idea here?
I I believe there's some sites that would potentially make sense already, and we don't want to get into all the the operationalizing of this immediately, but I think that the idea would be putting a particular location and having the structure in place. This isn't just designated an area, you know, greenfield with nothing put in place and saying this will someday be an innovation district, but actually putting it in and building the structure and having the right um activities in place there that it isn't just an empty shell, but actually um using that as a base for providing higher education, for putting in services and entrepreneurship and for having mixed um mixed office space that people can use as well as getting some tenants in there as well.
You know, I I think kind of playing off your point, Councilman, uh, and I know Councilman Holiday, you know, she talked about the fear of AI replacing people and, you know, when we think about innovation districts and we think about workforce, you know, think of this innovation district as a incubator for maybe AI careers or AI within additive manufacturing. Or when we think about transportation connectivity, you know, what are we, what are future transportation companies looking like? And so it could be a sort of a waystation for not only students to learn uh about, you know, generative AI, other forms of AI, but also it's, I can actually get a career in AI, but I can also stay in Flugerville and work for, you know, maybe in Essentia or in EOS Metals, who might build out some sort of AI component within, you know, wi- within within their company. And so, you know, functions as a way to, we don't fear AI, but we're, you know, we're helping create a we're helping create a way for people to stay in Flugerville, to upskill in Flugerville and to continue to contribute to businesses in Flugerville.
Well, Adam, to your point, that's been something that PCDC has helped with the school district on. Um, Northwest Elementary, if I think of in particular about upskilling. Um, and the pragmatic approach when you're looking at what you're looking at, the job, the dynamics of the job market we have right now. Um, AI is not going to just affect as we think of people in, um, you know, building cars, vehicles, these manufacturers, it's going to affect lawyers, it's going to affect doctors, it's going to affect all these other people. And so the white collar job field is going to be just as impacted as everything else from there. So then if we're looking at a re-skilling, retooling to an extent, and you know, Amy had talked about before about um creating that area, that that place where we actually have that skill set being done, we have that job training here in Flugerville, it makes sense that given where we are in the region, given our our location, given practicality, if we're looking at trying to see something that makes Flugerville different from everybody else, you have an innovative area, you have an innovative district. I think that comes with that though, to be blunt with you, is if we want to attract that, if we want to attract the things there, we've got to get an education point. And that and and that's going to have to be something like a four-year college or or honestly like an ACC that's doing the recent, you know, job training for the state, setting the standard for they get awards nationally for those things, to get that done. The question becomes is that in the environment that we're in right now, with such, you know, uh flux for better lack of terms, since you guys are so, um, it was an interesting word cloud, I'll put it that way. You know, how do we, how do we, where do we put that marker on that? How does that look and work forward for that? Um, and we know that where we have our growth is is east. So if we're doing that, what does we do east? What per- what partnerships, what are we working at regarding our, the developers in town to say, hey, listen, this is what our vision is, we want you to work with us to build toward that. Um, we know very well, your third bullet point, yes, yes, yes. We have too much money um in this community that's being spent other places, too much discretionary income. We know people are plenty of stuff wanting to go ahead and do things and they're just spending their money anywhere else because they don't have the places to go ahead and do so in Flugerville. And so how do we work to do that? I'm I'm glad to see PCDC, I'm glad to see the city working together to try to see what we can do about that, but we know that's an issue. And to your point, Tony, um, and by the way, I do want to say this, I I got to sit in the crowd, um, just listen um to this morning to their meeting and in that committee, um, that's a phenomenal, yeah, that is a phenomenal group of people, diverse group of people from five different um job sets, skill sets, viewpoints, ideas that are sitting there from that. That was very, very good. And to hear them honestly echo a lot of things, I don't know if they watch our council meetings. Serena always says there's only like two or three people who watch it, but uh but to echo, to 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 echo what the council has said over the last several times there, was pretty amazing to see about that. And so it means that, again, you know, which is good for our council, because that means that we are in lockstep, we are cognizant of what our citizens are looking for here. The question ultimately is, is that in this environment, what does execution look like?
So I wanted to just go back to, I think it's uh page ten, that basically says, you know, just to make a living wage, just live, um, that um post-secondary education is going to be hard. If we want people to, our children, to live here, stay here and work here, I want to echo again how important higher education is going to be for Flugerville. For us not to have to go to Austin or even just to go to Round Rock just to do a two-year education of ACC. Um, and then the other thing is page eleven, um, seeing where people are actually coming from and looking at their average household income compared to Flugerville and Austin. I'm concerned about the housing market. And will there be enough housing um for everyone? That comes up to me and I always come from that perspective as a person with lived experience. And then the people who are coming here with all this extra money, where are they spending it? I'll just say that.
So I'd say from the housing market, no, there's not, and there will not be. I mean, it's just, it's just that practicality is that if people are looking to go ahead and have that white picket fence and that, you know, that yard, the hog, everything else out there, that's just not something that's going to be affordable to everyone. I just, it's just not.
And they're coming from other places and buying up.
And that's the issue. We we've said for years, we blame the Californians, um, but the New Yorkers, other folks over there as well, they're just as bad. You know, because you're seeing that compare, and I wish you had that slide here.
He does have the slide.
Yeah, we're just cutting to the time.
Oh, I see, okay, there you go.
Yeah, go there.
Yeah, I think, I mean, for, we're just thinking, because we always talk about how this meeting isn't just for us, it's for the citizens, they need to see that.
Yeah.
Because that's ideal.
This is to the whole region. We can't get this data desegregated on if it's to to Flugerville or not. And the one thing not shown on there is that still the number one source of people moving to the region are Texans, so there is that. They might not have the incomes like that, but for by number of people, still Texans, to to be fair, to to the out of Siders.
All right, okay, well, you're saying they're Texans. Are they, you define them as Texans because they're moving in from another Texas area?
Yes.
But that means they may not be Texans, they may have been Californians that moved to and then now they're moving to Austin or Flugerville.
Listen to that attorney.
Fair.
But but it it but it is, it is quite shocking when you see that household income, you see what's moving in from here as well. But it's also reflective of what we we see. We see a bunch of our citizens wearing shirts from Colorado, wearing shirts from, I mean, it's just, it's it's you have a very different, you said ten years ago.
Yeah.
I'd say you have a very different environment from five years ago.
I think the uh part of the ancillary concern here is that, um, I heard you preface this by saying that this is less about attracting companies and more about attracting people because everyone can work from wherever they want to. But but the 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 point is that if we're attracting the people and and they have the ability to afford these higher value properties, then then what we do is 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 the urbanization that we've seen time and time again where all of our, and 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 I've said this before and I'll I'll keep harping on it, all of our first responders live out in Rockdale. And anytime you need someone to come to to take care of the things that are here, anytime you hit that drive-through at Starbucks or McDonald's and the 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 people that that are that are trying to provide those basic services that are starting out in their careers or their professions or seeking a secondary income can't afford to be here.
Right.
And and I think that's the issue that we're talking about, right? It it's it's not that we're making this this awesome place for for all the people that can afford to be here. I I I fully support that and think we we continue on with that, but we but we got to remember that that teachers, police officers, firefighters, EMS drivers, fast food employees, store tenders that that aren't making two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year, that that they need a place here too.
Yeah, and in the quote there was a a point around what economic developers were talking about, but ultimately it's about supporting people in a community and that goes to the education side so that somebody that's born here, grew up here, has the opportunities to earn an income that hopefully will keep them here. But this is, this is an inherent challenge we're talking about around having an attractive community. And the more that we get those restaurants and make this an even more attractive community, the more people are going to want to move here and it's going to increase the cost of living here unless there's rapid build-out of housing. We've seen this across the region. The housing cannot catch up with the rate of growth that we have had regionally. And so, you know, Flugerville, I've had conversations with some folks in this room and others about this for years and it's deeply embedded in the opportunity Austin strategy as well that we need to be thinking about regional approaches to addressing transportation and housing and density and all of these things. And none of it, to say this truthfully, is going to make it cheaper.
No, it's not.
It can slow the-
We are, we are not, we know we're not going back.
Yeah.
We aren't. And we know that eighty percent of the people who work in Austin don't live in Austin. Eighty percent of people who work in Flugerville don't work in Flugerville. Eighty percent of people who work in Georgetown don't live in Georgetown. Like, we 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 know, we see the domino effect. We are cognizant of the domino effect. So the question is, is that what do we, how do we help mitigate it, one? And then two, realistically speaking, how do we deal with the reality of the situation and try to address it in, you know, other ways and other factors to help buttress those people from there? Because, you know, the fastest way to make a community die is for the people that live there, that that work there, don't live there. Because that's just it. And you know, and that's, you know, I I mean, and people talk about often when we're talking about multifamily and those other things, I mean, I I got to give Serena a lot of credit. We had our meeting with the school board. People talk about often when we're talking about multifamily and those other things, I mean, I, I gotta give Serena a lot of credit, we had our meeting with, it's the school board with two weeks ago. Yeah, and you're looking at, you're looking at a two, two-bedroom home, uh, or two-bedroom rental apartment, twenty-six hundred dollars. Two-bedroom, that's a more, that's more than a mortgage for a lot of people.
Yeah. You know, as an economic developer, you know, for years, you know, obviously these are comprehensive plans, that, the, the tools for an economic developer side of it is. Always, let's create those better paying jobs to help people stay up with that and create those pathways to that on the education side. The housing one is a tough one, cause it's, it's not usually one that is within the toolbox on the economic development side to fix. But it, it's important that we air this in understanding that comprehensive nature of an economic development strategy and, and what the challenges are to come along with this. Just to keep us flowing, I appreciate this, cause some of what we've discussed, you're gonna see. You, you were previewing where some of this is going, but just to highlight a little too, you know, it wasn't just the interviews, there was a, a. Survey of businesses here in Flugerville that was done, and this was businesses of different sizes. We had sixty-two percent local small businesses. Twenty-four percent what we call primary employers, folks exporting services or goods out of the community. The small businesses more serving the local community. But to what was just discussed, building a skilled workforce, top of mind for folks is the number one issue. Followed by again, quality of life amenities and those options. And then continuing still, raising awareness that there's opportunities to invest, do business here. Helping businesses expand and locate. But I think really important that we're seeing this echoed, like you said. Uh, Rudy, just across the community of the voices and the, the opinions that we're hearing, there, there's not, there's a lot of consistency here. From businesses, from residents, from leadership. And I think what we are trying to do then is build in a framework.
Can you go to that last one?
Yes.
I think that last one is interesting to hear that from the public. I think that's really interesting to hear that. Because it's something that we've talked about, um, other than we're gonna build a, the Doug Weiss Taj Mahal or not. Well, it's, you know, that's interesting, it's interesting to hear the public say that.
It, it's interesting to see this and, and maybe it's the way the, the questions are, are worded. It, it's interesting to think, you know, are, are people saying we need this because we don't have it, or we need this because we. We are building it, uh, and when we see creating physical space for business, uh, and it's, you know, it's, it's lower on the list, is that because we're already doing a good job of that? Uh, or because it's unnecessary that it's, or less necessary that it's down at the bottom, so. Uh, I'm, I'm a little curious about the motivations behind the.
Well, and it's always interesting to think, if you're, if you're surveying existing businesses that are here, they're in space. So the, it's probably a lower priority.
They, they don't need it, well, they might need space to expand, but some of them are doing that already, so.
Yeah.
And again, hey, we're already doing a great job on that, maybe.
Well, I would say that, that those bottom two elements are things that, uh, uh, the PCDC has, is. Doing very well now, in, in conjunction with other people. I mean, Impact Way, up and down that, is. Uh, a, a place to help businesses expand and locate and creates physical space for businesses and has been doing it for a very long time. I'm interested that the, building a skilled workforce for local businesses is very much at the, the, the top of the list. Um, and I suspect that that ties into, uh, as, uh, Councilman Matera, uh. I was hitting at earlier, the lack of a, a university in the city. Um, there, there's only so much, uh, that, uh. The school district can do in terms of building a, a skilled workforce. They can, they can get you K through twelve and they can do a little bit beyond that. But, you know, uh, you're not gonna get a, uh, uh, a, a BBA in Flugerville today. So, that, uh, I think is.
I think it's.
An important missing ingredient.
And I think it's, yeah, cause I think that's, I think that's transformative. I really do. I think that's, that's something that can, that we have all. I, you know, identified for years. I mean, we've done this conversation for five, six, seven years and, um, and it's transformed, transformed what it can do.
So. There we go. So thinking about how we pull this together for a framework for a strategy. Be something we can communicate and identify where we're focusing on. And so this is our, our draft framework for how we can then orient. Activities below them. And, you know, we've got ideas on strategies, we've heard from folks. We don't wanna spend this time digging into how we're gonna operationalize all of this right now, but kind of show you where we're going to get your input. As we flush this out more in the planning process, but thinking of kind of three strategic areas of focus. Which future industries, future workforce and future community. And I'll, I'll give some examples, kinda how we're thinking this through.
I love how your spell check works.
On, on my end, it's underlined in red, I don't know what's. So, you know, thinking this out, and this is where the innovation district comes into play, where we're thinking future industries. When people, you know, where, where do you start when you're thinking about an innovation district? And I like this idea, cause part of this is. Let's show people, not tell them, what we want the future of Flugerville to look like. And not say, we, we wanna see office, we wanna see this development, let's put that, that mark in the ground, show what this is that we're operating in, and it's also. A way to build up businesses we have here and these opportunities in the type that we'd like to see. And part of this is when, when folks do these innovation districts and think about it, generally if you, if it's just. An open slate and we don't have a particular focus in an area, an industry, an expertise, they tend to not be as successful. And it's not always great to just pick an area where you don't have something that you're already strong in. Jump in and say, Dave, Flugerville's gonna be the innovation center for maritime logistics. You know, it doesn't make any sense that, it's an extreme example. But in this case, you have a tremendous existing industry present in additives and three D printing and these other areas. Number of companies that are global companies in this space, also potential to develop a unique identity around, um, aerospace, defense. There's an existing defense contracting presence here, got one of the highest concentration of veterans in the entire region. The Proximity Army Futures Command. How do we really take a stand here where nobody else is doing this and create an identity around this space? How we have veteran entrepreneurship programming. And building on that, recruiting a university satellite campus and opportunities that could grow around that. By having that industry focus. When you look at, I don't know if it was here, some conversation we mentioned, but. UTSA's new downtown San Antonio campus, people spoke a lot about the catalyst there. Tied to that, they have a national center around cybersecurity that is being located right there in that downtown campus. The region as a whole down in San Antonio is focused on cybersecurity, built that out, related to their defense presence as well. But putting that in that campus and tying that directly to that has been a particular mark of that effort. So, just, not just gonna tell you again, but showing you, so this is an example, it's, it's being developed right now, but in Mansfield. In the creation of Innovation Vision, this innovation district in Mansfield, Texas, is putting in a place right now, right around this. I don't think people, if you've thought about Mansfield in the past, have thought about Mansfield as an innovation center. But this is their rendering, now being developed, I believe, approved and built, to create that type of space with. Innovation, with existing businesses, with entrepreneurship, with education opportunities within it. And saying, we're gonna put this in and build out around that. Another example, kind of related to the additive, additive industry, it's less greenfield than Mansfield, but in Pittsburgh. You know, for fifty years, they've been making these investments in robotics and other areas of advanced manufacturing. To transition away from the, the steel past in Pittsburgh. Particularly within their neighborhoods, this ninety-first neighborhood district wanted to create a particular identity and distinct development. Around additive manufacturing and seeing how can we get all elements of that supply chain in place. The higher-end research and development activities, the entrepreneurship, the education, and build it out on a neighborhood concept. Grow from scale from there. It's, it's, this isn't, you know, just to show some examples, this isn't pie in the sky thinking. But really, how do we put that in place and in the ground to then build the development and that future industry and future community around it that we'd like to see? I'll pause here, or pause on any of these. If there's any thoughts on this as a concept, this is.
Well, just in reference to Mansfield, Texas, cause my, my, my best friend, long life friend, lives in Mansfield, Texas and. Uh, Mansfield could be Flugerville's sister city. It's a little different in that it's in the, the metroplex, the Dallas-Fort Worth area. I twenty, and so it's got a lot more activity, but very similar in population size and growth, old town. Um, and so that's exciting for them. I'm, I'm glad that's happening.
Let's make it exciting.
Well, yeah, cause I mean, I grew up around there and like, you, Mansfield was country.
What would people have said about Flugerville thirty, forty years ago?
I mean, it's, it tells you a lot about what's going on in the, um, area. And then just like you said, it's, it's not. This is not some outrageous thought, this is something that actually has pragmatic realities and tentacles for us to execute, but we have to. That's my Roger's point, you know, talking about education and other things, execute. I think the Army Future Command. I mean, and it's a really good idea, I don't think there's, uh, a lot of folks who have actually, I haven't heard anybody actually talk about it. Otherwise from that, and you know, given our veterans population, we're out of five families, you know, that's, that's significant, I think that's interesting. Again. Collaboration, but I think education, the key to Flugerville's next phase is going to be education, start pulling a lot of those other things that we want here.
Well, with that in mind, just subconscious of time, future workforce, and I, I wish our, my colleague Edgar Pudia could be with us. But he added a part after the steering committee meeting this morning. Um, but I'm glad we, we talked about this, but there, there's no one single solution on the education and workforce front. And it's, it's always important, I think we talk about, you know, flexibility in these programs. Not saying that we're gonna develop a program that's only gonna train in this particular area, because the, the workforce needs are shifting so frequently as the industries are changing. But it's also the types of activities, um, you know, Edgar likes to talk about pathways, partnerships and people. I mean, the focus is on people, and this is K through twelve, but it's also adult learners and others that need the retraining and thinking if jobs are at risk. Those are existing people in jobs that are seeing change. This isn't new, we've been seeing transitions in industries for years, but it's, it's. Accelerating in a pace that, you know, is frightening to some of folks, but the opportunity again around. Thinking through K through twelve and that CTE programs and what we're offering there, the ISD, how do we continue to advance that and support that? Looking for some of those shorter-term, smaller solutions in the interim, things that we can build out. In particular, it's tied to particular industries that are growing here, but also thinking through. Something that happens overnight. In this state of Texas, there are legislative elements to this, there's elements of working with the state. So how do we build that step-by-step process to begin the process? Step-by-step to begin a process. Anyway, to begin those steps, to, to put something in the place, to have those conversations. With those universities and others that would wanna align with the industries here, with the workforce here, and get that moving as soon as we can.
Well, I think that first you need to identify what type of industries you wanna bring into Flugerville. And then, uh, it, it, let's hypothetically say AI tech and stuff like that, just for conversation sake. Well then, you know, we need to start talking to industries that, you know, that, uh, you know. Bring in those type of jobs that, uh, you know, that, uh, at, at least train or whatever, and then start talking to the universities that, uh, focus on those type of jobs. Um, so if we have the Army's Future Command right here, their I, AI, uh, their tech, they're that type of industry. If we wanna bring in others, you know, that. Contracted out with the government for, for sake of conversation, I'll say, you know, um. Oh God, what is it? I'm trying to think of some of those government contracts.
Like Lockheed.
Boeing and everything else, stuff like that, you know, of course, then we start looking into that and what type of, uh, training do they need? What type of certification do they need? And I would think that, you know, once we have that in hand, then we can go to the universities that focus on that. And, uh, try to bring them in to get that certification and that higher education. And maybe Flugerville could be known as that area where you go across the country to go train. To get that type of certification or education. And so I think that would be a start.
Well, I think you'd have to have almost a strategist that's part of doing this full-time, because I think. With the staff, we have the staff that you guys have, you're very limited in terms of how many hours you can spend in a day to try to pull this together, so. I think in the future, we've gotta have somebody who's just full-time doing this, otherwise it's not gonna happen.
Well, and to, to pick up on, uh, uh, Councilman Beriza's points about, uh, military technology and. And synergies with what we have here in the central Texas area, of course, we don't really have a lot of aircraft manufacturing like a. A Raytheon or a, or a Lockheed Martin. We do have a lot of computer high-tech stuff. And Palantir. Is the kind of, of company that needs to have, uh, that needs to have an HQ two, right? Um, and with the kind of, you know, high-tech engineering, uh, backgrounds that is plentiful. Uh, in this area, maybe that's the kind of military high-tech that we might be able to attract here. That doesn't necessarily require, you know, large airfields.
Well, I know you mentioned earlier that maybe we don't want to focus on a type of industry, because things change? Think, is, am I, am I paraphrasing you correctly?
Uh, that's true, I think it's more, some of that is on those shorter-term training programs, the CTE side of it, there, there's basic skills and learning and. Training that you wanna give people to be able to, to adapt to a lot of different industries. But I think it's, it's being a little cautious on that side to say. We're only gonna train for, you know. CNC machining, because maybe in five years, we're not gonna be using those.
Well, I was gonna say, cause it, it's worked out for Round Rock, the medical part.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, you go to Round Rock, you get that portion of it, so, you know, if we get into this, we can identify, heaven forbid, you know, Rudy. Is a part of this, but you know, A and M has a great engineering portion, so, you know, if you bring A and M over here, that would really, uh. He's ignoring me right now, he's, he's, he's. Yeah, I'm trying to ignore everything you're saying, once I heard A and M. But no, I mean, I, I mean, there's a reason why they, they were in Round Rock, right? What's that? And they were in Round Rock for next period of time, and they still have a presence in Round Rock right there as well. I mean. It ju- it makes sense, I don't remember who brought up Baylor, S and U, I mean, it makes sense for some of these people who wanna have a foothold. In these other areas around the state, try to interest to go ahead and do so. I think it just makes sense honestly to have like Houston-Dulerton, because the significant majority of their. Students that do the nighttime, um, classroom work out there are Flugerville citizens, which is fascinating. I know, I was very surprised when I heard that myself. Um, so, you know, thinking about, just thinking about what would attract people to come here and have a foothold, because when we were in Frisco, Texas, I never thought of. U and T being in Frisco. And, um, that made a big difference with U and T being in Frisco, so why not have something like that? Someone come over here with that. PB, you're saying, A and M, you know what I mean, like, what, what can we do? What is that look?
And Frisco's an interesting example, you know, we, we were working on. We were working on Frisco strategy before that was developed and some of that was in conversation. Part of it, you know, folks don't necessarily realize, but Frisco is a huge center for computer game development. It's actually the, the National Computer Game Museum is there, there's a number of major gaming companies located in Frisco. And part of that is building out some of that skillset, so they can continue to support that industry, bringing in U and T, tying that into other things, but. You know, figuring out what their niche is in their particular area is part of making that story and making that work. Well, the last and other not least by far is that focus on the future community. And making sure that the SEDs, and this is again, not all the solutions and particular strategies have all been worked out here, and this is why we're here. But making sure that with future community, that PCDC SEDs is aligned with the city's community development priorities. Those developed in the twenty forty comprehensive plan. And so wanting to hear from y'all, you know, we've got some ideas. We had some great conversations, heard from you, but, you know, how can PCDC best support these efforts? What are those tools that we can use to help advance that future community? What, what additional resources, if any, might be needed to, to help advance that vision outlaid in the twenty forty plan?
You know, I, I, you know, we're.
Wait for somebody in the audience to yell at me right now, you know, David's friends are gonna yell at me pretty soon for saying that, I'm joking.
But, you know, we talked about one thirty, but I think we also need to talk about nine seventy-three. Because nine seventy-three is, I mean, Samsung quite literally is deciding what they're doing around itself. You know, from a housing standpoint, from a, uh, business partnership standpoint, everybody thinks over there in Taylor. And it's important for us, we've had this conversation for years about how we wanna be able to set what the quarter looks like. So, you know, I think that, you know, one thirty's true, but I think nine seventy-three is just as important too as well. Um, because we already have one of the biggest manufacturers in the world, already building on that. So, you know, between Anchorage and them, you know, there, right there, and then Tesla on one thirty, you have an opportunity, and Flugerville in the middle. I mean, you have an opportunity to do so, and then you wanna be able to actually speak to your partners around the region, you know, Maynor and. I know to an extent, um, what exactly is going on from their standpoint too, there's, there's some true synergy. what exactly is going on from their standpoint too. There's some true synergy.
One of the things y'all have talked about periodically, and I think that maybe might help to answer Tony's question, is land banking. And Councilman Matera has also talked about land banking quite a bit. I believe Mayor Protem Weiss brought that up not too long ago, that that would be something that could really help us in terms of making sure that the development goes the way we want it to go. We buy the land, we control the deal. And I think to the extent that the finances of PCDC allow that, that might be a big part of how you align your priorities with the city's community development priorities. I know that that was done once before, maybe too much because it crippled PCDC for several years. But PCDC has a lot, a bigger budget now than it did back in the day. And maybe some of those pieces right along 973, as Councilman Matera was talking about. To the extent we can control some of those corners, or some of those larger tracks, that might really give us an opportunity to help the development there and to have it align with the city's long-term development priorities.
Caesar, you'd asked us what we think about it. And, you know, I think number one, you have, like, how PCDC can help is not only with land banking, but, you know, our ultimate goal, I think all of you have said, is that four-year satellite university. Obviously, it's an alarm my preference would be UNT. But, you know, I think how you get there, though, is you use what we have now. So, you know, we're in additive manufacturing, we're, you know, veteran-oriented with the Army Future Command. And you can start maybe building classes using PCDC. We already do a lot of, we already do a lot of that, we already have a lot of resources. And maybe building that sort of workforce component, classes for various citizens to take, helping them upskill. And ultimately, you know, you have enough graduates of that program that you catch the eye of different universities. And, you know, you mentioned A&amp;M, you mentioned UNT, both like are veteran-friendly universities who might want to partner, you know, with the Army Future Command. And then they can come in and ultimately, you know, do courses in additive manufacturing or, you know, AI, AI for a white-collar professional, you know, to help in terms of legal. And so, I think in terms of PCDC, you know, that's how we can do it, is getting land-ready, but also, you know, helping out with the workforce development component and finding those people who can help us upskill. Because, you know, as we said here, on page, the page with all the statistics, you know, a workforce, sorry. My point is now muddled because I am going through this. But basically, all the statistics say, you know, you start out with that skilled workforce. And then I feel like that is a domino effect to getting everything, everything the citizens wanted in those priorities as well. So, a non-skilled workforce, and that's why Pittsburgh is what it is. That's why Pittsburgh didn't go the way of, you know, Cleveland, Detroit, or some of those because they were able to, you know, they were able to go into the future with their industry that made them a powerhouse in the past. And that's how we can do it too.
The only thing I would disagree with you on, or add on to that, maybe I'll disagree with you, is that the University of Texas is a phenomenal partner with Army Future Command. And the LBJ School actually graduates the most analyst, National Defense Analyst, for both the CI and the...
At the Stroud Center.
Yeah.
On that point, would you keep partnering with the city so close to the main...
Well, I mean, that's what, to Adam's point, to Al's point, what we're saying is that, you know, does it make sense for them to have that partnership? But the question is, is that how else do we, who else do we invite to the table? Do it make sense for that?
Geographically, I always lean towards Texas Tech.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, why not?
They're far enough away, and they don't have satellite.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just thinking when it comes to like, what is a veteran-friendly organization? And like, yes, I'm biased, but like, I also know, you know, the veterans' programs that they offer. Obviously, A&amp;M has, you know, the core. You know, you look at who is strong, you know, Army, Air Force, Navy, ROTC programs around. I know Texas has, I think, an Army ROTC, if I'm right. Yeah. But, you know, I just think about, how do we, you know, how do we work, how do we work more effectively with it?
But I'm thinking that this is where, I'm gonna be the fourth person to say that, land banking. I mean, this is where, I mean, you already have 130 Commerce Center. That was the flag put down, saying, "Hey, listen, this is gonna happen." People rolled their eyes, didn't think it was gonna happen. Develop, and look where you are today. You gotta look east, you gotta figure out east, figure out what you can buy, who can work for it, get some land, put that flag out there, and let's start building toward that. Because you gotta have some more that you're gonna have enough. Like, I mean, I like these ideas, and what do these ideas have? They have ideas to grow additionally, you know, from right now. I'm just thinking of the areas that we have, these areas, there are very few in between where you can have that added significant growth on there, where it just expands over there. So, where can PCDC look, see about that, get that property out there? And then after that, I mean, like I said, I was fascinated to see, I guess that's going true. Are we helping building construction for people to have their businesses here? Or do they want to do that, or they do it now, et cetera? But, I mean, given the markets and what we keep hearing from the developers' community, I have a feeling we're the ones who are gonna have to build, just like we're doing downtown east. We're building what we want to see there. We're gonna have to do the same thing with what we're gonna do with training, housing development, with that kind of force.
So, before, I got one more slide and conclusion, but before we get on that too, I'm just being conscious of time. I know that, you know, in addition to this, there's work that's already being done around this. And I wanted, and it relates militarily to some degree, but I wanted Amy to share something that I know she's been working on, building on, the retail focus that's already been in place and being developed, but would you like to share? So, this is military-related.
Well, the staff has been working with retail strategies. We started a contract with them back in May. That was in reaction to the city's retail recruitment policy that was passed by City Council in August. We really worked hard, and that was last August, not this August. But we have been working on developing a comprehensive list of restaurant potential, not only from our retail strategies, but also from all the property owners. Because a lot of them are talking with companies now. We're doing this, we're going piece by piece and talking to them to find out what are their interests, what are their setbacks, what can they do, what their timeline is on their projects, and trying to map all that out. To that end, we've also asked Jeremy Frizzell, who's our Planning Director at the city, to work with us on that, to try to identify what I call low-hanging fruit and to prioritize properties that can be more accessible to the needs and the locations required specific to the restaurant throughout the entire community. And we have made some great effort in that regard, and we're seeing a lot of interest from those that we're talking to, and those are the developers that could do something. We have named it Operation, that's the military part, Operation Hangry. And really, truly, it is a response, immediate response to what we're hearing from not only our residents, but our business owners too, for more restaurants in this community. So, us taking a more aggressive approach and trying to figure out specifically and identify and prioritize areas in the community, and try to make something happen sooner than later. And how can we intercede? I remember hearing different ones saying, "Bring it to us. We want to see the deals." So, trying to figure out where those deals are in the community is where we're at right now, and we're making some really great strides. But in that, we are also developing really strong partnerships too with those folks. So, it's been fun. But I would like to comment on one last thing. So, I had the rare opportunity to meet with some of the key folks at Boeing more recently. And I learned from them some things that I didn't know. You always do when you get out and you start talking to people, right? But in that meeting, I was able to find out, in the three segments that was presented to me, that they're really wanting to be noticed. They want to be involved. They want to be connected. They're in Austin, and nobody knows they're there. That was the message they gave. But what they were looking for was opportunities where they could mix and learn and meet people that are developing new product, entrepreneurism. They just wanted the space to be able to come and talk to those folks and be interactive with them. They have 6,700 people employed in this state right now, and they want to grow. And they love Austin, and they love the technology. And they have one person that all they do is look for that next innovative product. So, the large companies that are around us in our region are looking for those entrepreneurs. And us having a place for them to come in our community is important. They're going to Capital Factory, they're talking to the Army Command, Futures Command. Sorry, I can't even think. It's a pub future. But the point I'm trying to make is, if we have the platform, we can bring a lot of interaction that develops what we really want to see in this community. We just have to have a place for it to start, whether that's land banking, or whether it's having a facility. And it can involve a lot of activity that includes not only the entrepreneurism, but also, you know, all the amenities we're talking about, restaurants and inner activity in terms of education. And it does include offices, it includes people that are making things and doing things under a roof as well. So, I'm real excited because I feel like, once we get to the end of this plan, we will have a real strong roadmap for the future. And as long as we work collectively, and to your point, Mayor, no one person can do it all, but we can do it all together. And if we do it all together, and we form consortiums in order for us to enable things to move forward, then we have brought to the table the very people that we want at the table. And that may be a UT, it could be an Oklahoma University, no, maybe not. I had to throw that in for you, Rudy. I'm sorry. But you know, my point is that we can do things when we bring people together. And a lot of those consortiums are how all those innovative hubs have been built. And the education, all the pieces that go with it, they just kind of evolve out of the center. And that center is the key people that we have to have. So, no one person can do it, but we can do it together.
And Tony, I'm sorry, but we're at 7:01.
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you. Can I also thank you to city staff, the partner steering committee this morning, and all the input, and everybody's time here. But just know, we're working on this. We'll be back to y'all soon for even more feedback as this gets flushed out. But really appreciate all of your times. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Work session is adjourned.